I say me to you and excuse us and make me and forgive us You are the river in my life You see me through the season Cover me with your hand And lead me in your righteousness And I look to you And I wait on you And I'll sing to you, Lord A hymn of love For your faithfulness to lead me And I'm carrying everlasting arms You'll never let me go through it all You are everywhere in my life You see me through the season Cover me with your hand And lead me in your righteousness And I look to you And I wait on you And I'll sing to you, Lord A hymn of love For your faithfulness to lead me And I'm carrying everlasting arms You'll never let me go through it all Sing to you, Lord A hymn of love For your faithfulness to lead me And I'm carrying everlasting arms You'll never let me go through it all For every sin for you for every wrong for you for every sin for you for every wrong for you Be more than because I'm a man of God because he's my God
Praise God, let us continue to settle down as we have our opening prayer to bellow to us by Kuya Jerrya Cesar
Sige po, let's pray Dear God, maraming salamat po, Lord, for this evening, oh Lord, that you have given to all of us And Lord, we pray, God, that you will prepare our hearts, Panginoon, in receiving your word, Father God Salamat po, Lord, sa mga taong tinawag niyo po ngayong gabi to attend this book study Allow us, Lord God, to really understand your word, Father God And we really need, Lord, help the Holy Spirit, Lord God, so that we would gladly receive, Panginoon, paano man po, Lord, 'yung pinarepareho niyo po for all of us ngayong gabi na'to, Father We pray, God, for our speaker, oh Lord, that you will guide him as his speaker word, Panginoon We pray for him, that you will fill him with your Holy Spirit We pray for him, that he will speak with clarity, with conviction, Panginoon And we leap back to you, Lord, our book study ngayong gabi Maraming salamat po, Lord, sa opportunity na again, matutupu ulat kami, Lord, from your word And we thank you in advance, Father God, sa mga panibagong knowledge and wisdom namang gagaling po sa inyo, Father God We pray, God, for a good connection, internet connection We pray, God, na magiging smooth po, Panginoon, ang aming pag-attend sa class 9to, Lord God And we pray, God, for all the volunteers behind of this program We pray for them and remember them also in our prayers that we will continue to guide them, Panginoon, as they help us, Panginoon, to run this kind of gathering, Panginoon And maraming-maraming salamat po, Lord And we bring back to you, Lord, all the glory and praises in Jesus' name we pray, amen
Amen Thank you so much, Kuya Jerrya Palakpakan po natin ang Panginoon for his goodness and greatness in our lives And now, it is a blessing for me to introduce our speaker for tonight Siya po ang magi-discuss po sa atin ng God's Righteousness: Projected Dispensation Ayan Talagang itong speaker natin ngayon is very close to my heart, no? Because he is my mentor and actually, he is the former youth coordinator of Elevate Antipolo and happily married to his wife, Chloee D. Franco Ayan, currently, he is the Metro East Cluster 2 Head and COS member of CCF Antipolo Let's welcome our speaker for tonight, Mr. Archie Paul Franco First, shout clap everyone
Thank you, siyan So, magandang gabi po sa inyo lahat, sa lahat po ng nandito Ay, mamis po na ang daming umatens sa Book of Romans So, grabe, isa po na-share po 'yung Book of Romans po is one of my favorite book in the Bible Lalo na po pag-down ako or may mga moments that I'm struggling with my walk with God My number one encouragement is really the Book of Romans 'Yung assignment niyo po dito na pinapabasa po sa inyo 'yung Book of Romans from chapter 1 to 16 So, ako po dati ginagawa ko ay read the Book of Romans, chapter 1 to 16, in one sitting Kasi po, for me to get the whole point of the Book of Romans, I really need to put time in really reading it at one sitting Alam niyo po, just to introduce, ang secret po for us to understand, lalo na po 'yung mga sinulat ni Paul sa Bible, for us to have an understanding of what is trying to say Kasi si Paul po, pag nagsulat siya sa Bible, ano po 'yan eh, lagi pong may kwento 'yan 'Yung chapter 1 kung hanggang ano, chapter 6, pa'yan, chapter 16 'Yung thoughts po ni Paul, isang buo po 'yan Kasi kung alam niyo po 'yung Bible before, wala naman 'yang verse and chapter That's why si Paul po, pag nagsulat siya, most of the time, buong-buo po 'yung thought niya from first chapter unto the last chapter Ganun po si Paul magsulat And now, we are studying here in the Book of Romans And I'm happy that marami pong interested in really studying it And I know, sa mga speaker po natin, sa mga, sa past, like Dr. Doon, Pastor Mark, Kuya Jerry, I know you have learned so many things from them And hopefully po, ngayong gabi, God would guide me na ma-deliver ko po 'yung salita ng Diyos ng malinaw at naiintindihan po natin Kasi ang pinakasikreto po talaga, pagdating sa pag-aaral ng salita ng Diyos, hindi po 'yung pangunawa lang, hindi po 'yung pag-apply Pero syempre, nagsisimula po 'yun sa pagkakaunawa mo ng salita ng Diyos bago mo siya mai-apply, before mo siya ma-apply sa personal na buhay mo And honestly, ito pong chapter 9, because we are on the chapter 9 in the Book of Romans Honestly, in the Book of Romans, this is one of the most challenging chapter Kung babasain niyo po, nabasa niyo po 'yung Book of Romans sa mga assignments niyo, one of the most challenging chapter to understand is really the Book of Romans There are so, chapter 9 ng Book of Romans, there are so many confusions and questions na magbrot up po sa mind natin Paghini-may talaga natin 'yung verse by verse nitong Book of Romans But hopefully this evening, I could share to you the most simplest way may be by the power of the Holy Spirit na maunawaan at maintindihan po natin 'to So, bago po ako mag-share ng screen, siguro, let's just bow our head Dedicate na po natin 'yung time natin Pag-pray po natin na ma-open po nito 'yung heart and mind natin para po maintindihan natin 'yung salita ng Diyos Because I personally believe without the Holy Spirit guidance sa ating kung lahat, hindi po nakin to maiintindihan Hindi po nakin to ma-i-apply at hindi po nakin to maunawaan Kaya hini-po natin 'yung gabay ng santong spirito sa gabi nito, let's pray Panginoon, haring amambalas sa langit, nagpupuri, nagpapasalamat po kami sapagat binigyan mo po kami ng pagkakataon na pag-aralan po 'yung mga salita mo Lord, alam po namin na hindi po lahat nabigyan ng pagkakataon na matawag mo Nabigyan ng pagkakataon na pag-aralan po 'yung mga salita mo Pero Lord, sa gabi nito, buksan mo po 'yung puso at isip namin dun po sa mga bagay na gusto mo pong sabihin sa akin Lord, hindi lang po namin to matutunan sa isip kundi matutunan po namin mai-apply po, Lord, sa mga personal na buhay po namin And Lord, as we continue to study your word, Lord, our ultimate goal is to have an intimate relationship with you That's why for all of those persons who are here tonight, I pray that we will be intimate with you all the more as we understand your word Guide me, prepare me, oh Lord We offer this, Lord, through you and your son, Jesus Christ, amen So, let's start by just sharing my screen po Yeah, so Now, we're studying the Book of Romans And intitled po natin 'yung God's Righteousness: Rejective or Dispensation So, mamaya po, dadaanan po natin 'yan ng konti Pero for the past week, we've been studying a lot in the Book of Romans from chapters 1, the introduction of Paul in the Book of Romans, from chapters 1 to 2 It talks about the condemnation of all mankind that we are all sinners, that we can do nothing apart from God And in chapter 3 to 5, we talk about the justification of all the believers that the death of Jesus Christ justified us by faith Ibig sabihin po, si Kristo na 'yung pumalit Si Kristo po 'yung nag-justify na mga kasalanan natin so that we will be made right shoes And in chapter 6 to 7 until 8, it talks about the sanctification of believers Ibig sabihin po, 'yung continuous transformation na ginagawa po ni Cristo sa mga buhay po natin And now, we're diving into Romans chapter 9 And when you look at Romans chapter 9, kung tignan niyo po 'yung chapter 1 to 16, 'yung chapter 9 to 11 po kasi 'yung ide-discuss ko for the next 3 weeks kung titignan niyo po, ito po 'yung parang ano, bakit biglang sinigit ni Paul? It's something like that, kung babasain niyo po na mabuti 'yung Book of Romans, parang bakit biglang sinigit ni Paul 'yung chapter 9 to 11? Ito po 'yung pag-uusapan natin Because in Romans chapter 1 through 8, Paul totally convinced us about man's need and God's glorious provision in Jesus Christ that Jesus Christ say, "Na wala pong imposibleng kasalanan na hindi kayang pagbayaran at hindi po kayang iligtas ng Diyos" through the power of the Holy Spirit And now, this is the question that is brought up in chapter 9 of the Book of Romans Kung ang pangako po ng Diyos, di ba alam namang po natin lahat na ang bansang pinili ng Diyos ay 'yung mga Israelita? Alam po natin, you look at the Bible, the smallest nation, the weakest nation, is chosen by God primarily, primarily to show primarily to show that in our witness, God should be our strength Kaya po, kung titignan niyo 'yung Israel, sila po 'yung smallest nation, weakest nation, wala nga po silang sariling lande but God chooses them And in the Book of Romans, 'yun 'yung pinag-uusapan, in offer ni Jesus 'yung salvation to the Gentiles ang ibig sabihin po ng Gentiles, mga non-Jew ibig sabihin po 'yung mga hindi po parte ng Israel And in chapter 9, 'yun po 'yung tanong, anong mangyayari dun sa mga Jew na initially pinili ni God, initially pinili ni Lord as a nation? So, does the gospel, by promising salvation to the Gentiles as well as to the Jews, means that God has broken his promise to earthly people, the Jews? So, when you look at chapter 9, 10, 11, Paul answered in co-verse, Israel passed in chapter 9 in the present, in chapter 10, it's the present state of Israel and chapter 11, it's the future So, ito pong 3 chapters na'to, ang pinokonsis po nito is 'yung divine sovereignty and responsibility Divine, ibig sabihin po 'yung divine sovereignty, 'yung sovereignty ni God, tsaka po human responsibility in terms of our salvation So, 'yung mga ipassage po nito, mamaya po pag-uusapan po natin but ito po 'yung basically na ikocover po natin for the rest of the evening Hopefully, the next 30 minutes would be passed and we would understand and we'd apply it to our own personal life So, let's start In Romans chapter 9, verse 1 to 3, Apostle Paul converted the conversation here and talks about the Jews Sabi niya dito in verse 1, "I am telling the truth in Christ, and I am not lying," passionate po si Paul eh "And I am not lying My conscience testifies with me in the Holy Spirit" Ito po 'yung mga na-highlight "That I have a great sorrow and unceasing grief in my heart for I could wish that I myself were a curse separated from Christ for the sake of my countryman, my kingsmen, according to the flesh" Just give you the background Ito po, di ba po, si Paul po kasi ang ministry po ni Paul, ang totoong ministry 'yan is for the Jews Ibig sabihin po 'yung nire-reach out ni Paul sa mga apostles, si Paul po 'yung nagre-reach out sa mga non-Jew, ibig sabihin to the Gentiles Kaya nga po, pag kinignan niyo po 'yung New Testament natin sa Bible, ang mga sinulat po ni Paul, Galatians, Ephesians, mga churches po na non-Jew ibig sabihin, ito 'yung mga non-Israelite Kasi ito po 'yung main ministry ni Paul, reaching out the non-Jew, not the Jews Pero he's also reaching out to the Jews, but his main ministry is planting churches to the non-Jew But in verse 9, nilabas ni Paul 'yung heart niya for the Jew Kasi po, 'yung mga Jew during this time, meron sila sigurong spiritual pride that we are the chosen nation Nasanay po sila that they need to obey the law Ibig sabihin po, nasanay po sila na ang salvation, 'yung kaligtasan, 'yung pagpunta po sa langit, 'yung pagawa po ng mabuti at pagsunod po sa law 'Yung po 'yung mindset na mga Jew Kung magko-culturally, 'yung mga Jew, ang iniisip nila, "For me to be saved" "For me to be saved, I need to follow the Torah" Ibig sabihin po ito, 'yung first five books of the Bible Kailangan kong i-follow lahat ng lo don para maplis ko sigala, para ma-save ako But in transition to Christ coming to work, ang transition po is you need to believe in Jesus Christ You need to have faith in him You need to believe that he is the Messiah for you to be saved And dito po, 'yung mga Jew po, 'yung mga Israelite, they don't believe that the Messiah is Jesus Christ That's why Paul was talking to them Nasabi niya dito, "I have great sorrow and unceasing grief in my heart" Parang sabi niya, "I wish that I myself were a curse separated from Christ for the sake of my countryman" Parang sinasabi niya, "Maligtas lang kayo, ako na 'yung mapahama" Okay lang 'Yun po 'yung sinasabi ni Paul na He's really pouring out his heart for his Israelites for the chosen nation of God Kasi nga po, 'yun po 'yung totoong heart ni Paul And tayo po minsan, we don't have that heart, eh when we ask for the loss, di ba? Hopefully po, we have the same heart as Paul Na si Paul is willing to die is willing to be separated from Christ for the sake of his countryman Pero ang sinasabi po dito, na grabe po 'yung heart ni Paul for the loss That he, nililibil niya po 'yung heart niya for his peers Nililibil niya po 'yung heart niya for those people who were lost Ed, makita niyo po dito, as a follower of Christ, as a servant of Christ Grabe po 'yung dedication ni Paul in really reaching out the people And next one, highlight that na grabe po 'yung heart ni Paul in really reaching out the people, even loving his countryman, the chosen nation of God, for them to be saved Ed, in verse 4, grabe dito, "Who are Israelites to whom belongs to the adoption as sons and daughters, the glory, the covenant, the gibbons of the law, the temple service, and the promises whose are the fathers, and from whom is the Christ according to the flesh, whom is over all God bless forever, amen" Ang sinasabi po dito ni Paul sa Romans chapter 1 to 5, ang sinasabi, chapter 1, verse 5 to 5, pinakita niya 'yung mga blessings Sa parang sinasabi niya, "'Yung mga katrimen ko, hindi kayo naniniwala kay Christ Hindi niyo ba nakikita 'yung mga blessing ni God sa inyo?" Sobrang dami ng blessing, unang-una sinabi niya na blessing "He adopted you as his sons" Sabi niya, ito 'yung mga special blessings na binigay ni Lord sa mga Jew "He adopted them as his sons" Israel is my firstborn son in Exodus chapter 4, verse 22 and Hosea chapter 11, verse 11 Ang sinasabi po dito, that nation of Israel is the firstborn son of God The next blessing that God brought to the chosen nation of Israel is the Shekinah glory 'Yung Shekinah glory po, it was the evidence that God was present with his people Basically, 'yung Shekinah glory, ito po 'yung blessing ng presence ni God During po sa all testament, 'yung Shekinah glory, pag nagwo-worship po sila, nagkakaroon po ng usok sa temple Pinaparamdam po ni God 'yung presence sila sa kanila And when you look at Exodus 33, verse 3, di ba sabi dun ni Moses, I think it's in Exodus chapter 33, and sabi dun niya, "If your presence will not go with me, send me" Ganun po ka-importante 'yung presence ni God sa Israel during that time And ito po 'yung blessing ni Lord sa kanila, that the glory of God and the presence of God go with them Next po is the worship in the temple 'Yung, the Book of Leviticus gives us all the rules for the pleas and for the ceremonies when Paul wrote to the Romans, the Jews were still using the temple to offer sacrifices 'Yung po 'yung context, na parang God give it to them, the worship in the temple 'Yung main covenant po ni God kay Abraham 'Yung lupo na binigay ni Lord to obey, sa mga Israelites po 'yung unang binigay Ano pa po? The promises 'Yung God's promise kay Abraham, that one of his descendants, he would know kindness to all the families of your And the promise came from the line of David Imagine, sobrang daming blessing na binigay ni God sa mga Israelites The fathers, the first three of the fathers, like Isaac, Jacob, and the twelve sons of Jacob And lastly, Christ was born as a Jew, imagine Yah, the Savior, our Christ, the birth of Pilipino si Christ, di ba? Grabe 'yun Imaginein niyo, gaano ka-confident kunyari Pilipino si Christ, di ba? Ibig sabihin ko, our Savior, imagine, ganun ka, hindi 'yung impact nun And God give them the blessing that Christ was born as a Jew of the tribe of Judah and of the lineage of David And it's all blessing that comes from God And Paul was reminding the Israelite people in Romans chapter 1 to 5 na grabe 'yung heart ko sa inyo at gusto ko lang sabihin sa inyo, sobrang dami ng blessing na binigay sa inyo ni God You can't ask for more Paul was talking to the Jew Paul was talking to them, and even to the Gentiles as well Sobrang daming binigay na blessing, there's importance I'm not saying nga wala ang importance 'yung Israel Meron, kasi chosen nation sila ng gabi Kaya nga natin 'to pinakita para mapakita That's how important they are in the eyes of God That God gives them those blessings Because they are chosen by God, mamaya maintindihan niyo po paano po pinili si God And this is one of the most crucial theological aspect of Romans chapter 9 It's in God's sovereignty, how God chooses Lalo na po in relation to our salvation Now, let's jump to verse 6 and 7 "It is not as though the word of God has failed" Sabi niya, ang pinapasabi po dito ni Paul, 'yung from chapter 1 to 5, sabi niya, hindi naman sa kinalimutan na ni God 'yung pangako niya sa Israel Sabi niya, hindi nabigo si God "The word of God does not fail the Israelite for they are not all Israel who are descended from Israel" Mamaya po, hi-hima 'yun po natin 'to Maybe ito po 'yung mga nakakalitong verses Pag may question po ngayon, siguro mamaya nalang po, baka nandyan sila Dr. But this is one of the most, ano ba, 'yung mga nakakalitong verses that we need to study Na, sabi po dito ni Paul, "But it's not as though the word of God has failed for they are not all Israel who are descended from Israel" Paul was speaking, na parang 'Yung mga pinanganak na Israelites, it na segment Israelites sila Mamaya po, maintindihan po natin bakit sinasabi 'yun ni Paul "Nor they are children because they are Abraham's descendants but through his act your descendants shall be named" Because if God made a promise to Israel as his chosen people, ang tanong po, how can this be squared with Israel's present rejection? So, ibig sabihin po, kung nire-reject naman ang mga Israelites si God, even though they are the chosen nation, how would God respond to that? How would the Israelites receive their blessing? And in verse 8, that it is not that "children of the flesh who are children of God" Dito po natin maintindihan 'yung verse 7, verse 6 and 7 That it is not the children of the flesh who are children of God but the children of the promise I just want you to highlight that, ito po gusto ko maintindihan niyo But the children of the promise are regarded as descendants for this is the word of the promise At this time, I will come, and Sarah will have a side So, ang point po natin dito, Paul was saying to the Israelites, hindi totoong mga Israelites or descendants 'yung mga anak fisikalí, ibig sabihin po anak dun sa racial, pagpapalaki sa kanila like being an Israelite Ang sinasabi po dito ni Paul, but that children of the promise are regarded as descendants Ed, sino po 'yung children of promise? Kung maalala niyo po ang children of promise po si Isaac Tama po ba kung, kunahalaan po 'yung Bible mo, meron po 'yung dalawang anak si Abraham Sino po 'yung unang anak ni Abraham? Kung alam niyo po, sige, chat niyo lang po ako Ah, sino po 'yung una anak ni Abraham? Para po ano, may interaction po tayo Kasi dalawa po 'yun eh, di ba po, dalawa po 'yung naging anak ni Abraham 'Yung una pong naging, naman po 'yung mga chat niyo 'Yung una pong naging anak ni Abraham is Ismael Di ba po? Ibig sabihin po, bago po dumating Yes, Doc, nagnandyan na si Doc Yes po, Doc, magandang gabi po Um Ibig sabihin, bago pa, bago pa pinanganak si Isaac, meron ang naging unang anak, si Ismael Ibig sabihin, si Abraham, nangako sigal sa inya na ito 'yung magiging tata "You are the father, you will be the father of this nation" 'Yun po 'yung pangako ni God Ed, na inip, si Sarah, pinanganak si Ismael But the children, but the children of the promise is si Isaac Si Isaac po, kaya pag kinignan niyo 'yung descendants, 'yung descendants po ng Israel is through the bloodline of Isaac 'Yung 12 tribes po through Isaac po 'yun Ibig sabihin po, dun po mangkagaling 'yun hanggang pagdating po kay David It's in the lineage of Isaac Because Isaac is the children that is promised by God So, ang sinasabi po dito, that but the children of the promise are regarded as descendants Ibig sabihin po 'yung pinangako na Diyos So, ang comparison po dito, 'yung physical descent tsaka po spiritual descent Ang sinasabi nila po nito, Paul make a contrasting comparison that Paul was contrasting two things the physical descent of Israel is being born as Israelites and the second, na sinasabi niya, that is born in the promise is the spiritual descent So, 'yung physical descent po may not be a real Jew in a spiritual sense 'Yun po 'yung ina-explain ni Paul But the real descendants of Abraham are those who believe in God's promises as explained in chapter 4 po ng Book of Romans Kung tignan niyo po 'yung chapter 4 ng Book of Romans, "for the promise to Abraham or to his descendants, that he would be heir of the world, was not through the law" So, ang linaw po dito in Romans chapter 4, na 'yung descendants po ni Abraham would not be descendants through the law but through the righteousness that comes by faith Kaya po tayo nandito, kaya po tayo ligtas by faith, righteousness by faith "For if those who are of the law are heirs, then faith is made void, and the promise is nullified" So, kaya po ngayon, ang usapan na po dito sa sinasabi ni Paul, now we're talking about descendants in terms of the spiritual aspect 'Yung sa promise po ni God, 'yung righteousness by faith So, 'yung po 'yung ina-explain niya sa mga Israelite, 'yung righteousness by faith So, ay, as we jump to verse 15, "For the law brings about wrath, but where there is no law, there is also no violation for this reason, it is by faith, in order that it may be in accordance with the grace, so that the promise will be guaranteed to all descendants" not only to those who are of the law, but also to those who are of the faith of Abraham, who is the father of us all." So itingnan niyo po 'yung sinasabi ni Paul dito. Even talking to the Gentiles and to the Jews, si Abraham po is tatay po nating lahat, not because of our descendants, but because of faith. Naintindihan po ba? Thumbs up lang po kung, sobrang complicated po na mga verses. Just wanna make you understand it better that Paul was saying to them, na ang mas importante ngayon, 'yung naniwala by faith, 'yung righteous by faith. It's not really on the descendant whether you are a Jew or whether you are a Gentile. Ang sinasabi ni Paul, lahat tayo, dun na tayo sa promise ni God. And 'yung promise ni God, it should be righteousness by faith, believing in Jesus Christ by faith, saving by grace, because all of this is by grace. Kaya po itingnan niyo, personal application po natin. Grabe po 'yung grace ni God sa atin. Grabe po 'yung pagtanggap po ni God sa atin. That he offers his salvation not just for the Jew, and also for us. Maybe in the next chapters, pag-uusapan po natin yun na, siyempre, hindi naman po dapat tayo maging prideful that we are also chosen by God as Gentiles and being saved by Christ. So, now let's jump to Romans chapter 9, verse 10 to 13. Ito po medyo mad, ito po 'yung mga ano eh, tawag po natin dito. Ito po 'yung mga verses in the, in chapter 9, na marami pong questions talaga na narace. Idig sabihin ko, one of the most complicated verses in Romans chapter 9, that many are asking, what does this mean? Maybe mamaya po, baka nandyan po si doc dun sa pastor mark, pwedeng po sila tanong. But let's talk about this in Romans chapter 9, verse 10 to 13. And not only that, but there was also Rebecca, when she had conceived twins by one man, our father Isaac, idig sabihin po si Isaac po, a child na rinamis ni God kay Abraham, "For though the twins were not yet born, and had not done anything good or bad..." So that God's, ito po, itingnan niyo po, "For though the twins were not yet born, and had not done anything good or bad, so that God's purpose..." Ito po, it's wanna highlight, God's purpose according to his choice. Highlight po natin yun, God's purpose according to his choice would stand. Dito na po tayo sa mga sovereignty ni God, 'yung choices ni God. How God chose, choose people, how God choose all these things, not because of works, but because of him who calls. "It was said to her, the older will serve the younger. Just as it is written, Jacob I love, but Esau I hated." Ang tanong po dito, bago po'y panganak si Esau, galit na ba si Lord sa kanya? Idig sabihin ko po, bakit hindi siya pinili ni Lord? Idig sabihin po sa ating mga tao, sino 'yung pinili ni Lord, sino 'yung hindi? Kung ikokompare po natin ito sa kaligtasan natin, sino po 'yung saved, sino po 'yung hindi? Di ba? Parang kung si God, he chose those people whom he hate, and he chose those people whom he love. Parang unfair naman si God. If hindi ka pa pinapanganak, wala ka pang ginagawang mali, nakapili na pala si Lord. Parang ayaw po 'yung question dito eh, na hindi ka pa pinapanganak, wala pang nangyayari sa'yo, may pinili na si Lord. Now, if God made the promise to Israel as his chosen people, what would happen to the Gentiles and what would happen to the Jew? So, Paul gives a second example of God's choice. Ito po yun, 'yung Jacob I love and Esau I hated. So, gusto ko lang pong i-highlight dito para po mas maintindihan natin, na si God, meron po kasi tatawag na election, idig sabihin ito po 'yung mga pinili ni Lord. Si God po pag namili, election is based upon God's foreknowledge of the person and their free will to choose him. So ano pong idig kong sabihin dito? 'Yung election po, idig sabihin po, parang 'yung tanyan ito kay Esau, si Sarah i-date ko. 'Yung pagpili po ni God, depende po yun sa foreknowledge of God. Idig sabihin po 'yung foreknowledge, ito po 'yung pagiging all-knowing ni God. Sino po dito thumbs up na lang po para po, parang klase namang po tayo, parang to understand the book of Romans all the more, para po meron po tayong konting survey. Sino po dito naniniwala na alam na po ni God 'yung mangyayari sa buhay natin? Thumbs up po. So, sino po naniniwala dito all-knowing si God? Idig sabihin po, walang bagay na hindi alam si Lord. Sige po, ano lang po, thumbs up lang po tayo. Gusto ko lang po malaman kung lahat po tayo dito naniniwala, surprise God po, lahat po tayo naniniwala dito. Kasi, ang sinasabi po dito, that 'yung pagpili po ni God, 'yung election ni God, is based upon God's foreknowledge. Idig sabihin po, God already knew since the beginning. God already knew since day one. God already knew since before we were born. Kung titignan niyo po 'yung book of Jeremiah, sabi ni God kay Jeremiah, "Before you were born, I knew you." Di ba po, kung titignan niyo po 'yung understanding of character of God. God is an all-knowing God, that he knows everything. Idig sabihin po, wala pong nalilingit sa Diyos. Bago pa lang panganak, alam na po ni Diyos, ng Diyos 'yung what will happen in our life? We believe on that why? Because God is God. If God doesn't know everything, God is not God. Di ba po? Yung po 'yung logic nun, if God doesn't know everything, God will not be God. But God, but because God knows everything in his foreknowledge, in his choice, God knew all this. Kaya po pag kinignan niyo sa 1 Peter, cross reference nang po natin sa 1 Peter, chapter 1, verse 2, "According to the foreknowledge of God the Father, by the sanctifying work of the Spirit, to obey Jesus Christ and be sprinkled with his blood, may grace and peace be multiplied to you, in relation to our salvation, according to the foreknowledge of the Father, and according to the work of the Holy Spirit." Alam na po ni God talaga, who will choose him? Yung po 'yung sinasabi daw, God already knew, sino po 'yung mga tao napipili sa kanya? Parang ano po, no? Talaga, ito pa rin 'yung mga alam ni God na hindi siya pipiliin, di ba? Ayaw po 'yung mga tanong eh, di ba? If God already knew, kung sino 'yung mga taong pipili sa kanya, how about those person who will not choose God? Di ba? Parang alam na po ni God, sino 'yung mga hindi pipili sa kanya? Question po yun, alam po ba ni God kung sino 'yung mga taong hindi pipili sa kanya? Sige po, ano po, thumbs up po, if naniniwala po kayo, naniniwala po ba kayo na alam na ni Lord? Kung sino 'yung mga taong para sa kanya at hindi sa kanya? If God is an all-knowing God, do you think God already knew those who will follow him and those who will not? And I believe, according to what the Bible is teaching us, God already knew who will choose him or not. And maybe the question would be, papaano yun? Papaano 'yung mga taong na hindi pipili kay God? Idig sabihin, ano, bago pa sila i-create ni God, bago pa sila ipanganak, naready na nila, naready na sila ni God sa hell? Idig sabihin, ready na sila mapahamak for the rest of their life, and they will go to hell, because hindi sila napili ni God, and they don't have the choice to follow God. And I personally believe, God's sovereignty and God's free will is interconnected. 'Yung sovereignty ni God, 'yung free will ni God interconnected, idig sabihin po, God make us choose him by our own free will, but God knows who will choose him. Ang hirap po talaga intindihan, no? God already knew who will choose him, but he made us a choice who will choose him. So, personal example na lang po, kunyari po nag-share kayo ng gospel sa limang tao, isa po 'yung tumangga. Idig sabihan, 'yung apat po, alam po nila 'yung truth, but this person, he choose God. God always give us the choice to choose our life, our path, the things that we need to take. But in his foreknowledge, God already knew kung sino 'yung mga pipili sa kanya. And you know what? God don't need to do anything para po dun sa mga hindi pipili sa kanya na mapahamak. Alam niyo po ba yun na, hindi nakailangan gumawa ni God na, parang sasabihin ng iba, ipapaano yun, parang 'yung mga next part po dito, mamaya pag-usapan po natin yun, pagdating po kay Pedro, i-harden 'yung heart niya, let's discuss that later. So, the Lord is not slow. Ito naman po 'yung heart ni God for everyone. If the truth is this, that in his foreknowledge, God already knew kung sino po 'yung mga magiligtas and who will choose him. And in 2 Peter, chapter 3, verse 9, ang sabi naman po dito, ang heart, ito po 'yung heart ni Lord, "The Lord is not slow about his promise, as some count slowness, but his patience toward you, not willing for any to perish, but for all to come to repentance." Nakita niyo po ba 'yung heart ni God? God's heart is for everyone to come to repentance. God's heart is for everyone. God gives us choice. Kaya nga po nakalagay dyan eh, "Not wanting anyone to perish, but everyone to come to repentance." Pag tinignan niyo po sa Matthew, chapter 7, verse 13 to 14, kung titignan niyo po yun, sabi dun ni Jesus, "For the wide gate and broad is the road that leads to destruction." And 'yung marami daw pong papasok dun sa malawak na gate, kaysa po sa narrow gate. Pero, ang sinasabi po dun ni Jesus, there is this choice. God is still opening choices to humans, but people will choose the wider gate more than the narrow gate. Kung titignan niyo po dito, God, even Jesus, alam niya na, people will make choices. We choose our path, we choose our life, but in his foreknowledge, God already knew who belongs to him. And magpasalamat po tayo kung nandito po kayo sa book of Romans, study natin. Kasi pinili niyo po si Lord. Of course, God, si God po 'yung nakahanap sa atin, si God po 'yung humili sa atin. But the spirit of God enable us, na get's niyo po eh, the spirit of God enable us to believe in him, enable us to come to him. Because kung wala po 'yung enablement ni God, it's really impossible for us to believe in him. He chose us, but in his grace, ito po yun eh, he chose us, but in his grace, he let us choose him. Our choice wasn't predetermined for us. Idig sabihin, hindi si Christ 'yung humili agad, pinapili niya tayo, pero pinili niya tayo by the grace of God. Grabe po ano, grabe po si God. And God's election is not based upon performance. Hindi po ito lang ah, kasi kung gaano ka kagaling mag-perform, but it is by choice. Ang point po natin ng by choice, si God po 'yung humili. Kaya nga po pag tinignan niyo salvation, kung alam niyo po 'yung salvation, di ba po, Jesus Christ plus nothing is equal to salvation. Ang point po natin, we don't do anything to be saved. Basta si Jesus Christ lang. There is no other way. There is no religion. There is no good things. There is no good things. There is no other person that can save us. It's only through Jesus Christ. Kaya po, 'yung God's election is not really based on performance. How good are you as a follower? How good are you in terms of your quiet time? How good are you as you read your Bible, as study the book of Romans? But it is solely a choice of God. It is a choice of God. We are chosen by God. And balikan po natin in Romans chapter 8, verse 29, "For those whom he foreknew, he also predispinned to become conformed to the image of his Son." And again, nandyan po 'yung the word na he already foreknew. For those him he foreknew, he already knew since the beginning. He also predispinned them to become, to become conformed to the image of his Son, so that he would be the firstborn among many brothers and sisters. We can rest assured that if we have chosen God, he had foreknowledge of this, and he also chose and predispinned us to be conformed into his likeness. What I mean is this, if God chooses us, he already knew that we will choose him. Gusto ko lang pong i-highlight yun na, alam niyo ba't ko po hinai-highlight? Gusto ko po makita niyo na 'yung relasyon niyo po kay God, grace. Na hindi po natin to deserve. Kaya nga po sa kaligtasan po natin, dapat ang lagi po nating tanong, ang lagi po nating tanong kay Lord, "Lord, bakit ako?" Di ba? Di ba natatanong po natin yun na, "Lord, bakit ako? Bakit mo ako napili? I'm a sinner, I'm a rich man." Alam mo 'yung, mas dami-daming, mas maguting tao sa akin dyan, "Ba't pinili mo ako na mapalapit sa'yo? Ba't pinili mo ako na makilala ka? Inenable mo ako na makalapit sa'yo?" Gusto ko lang pong sabihin sa inyo na grace po yun ni Lord. Huwag po nating, huwag po nating sayangin 'yung biyaya ng Diyos. Idig sabihin, seriusoyin po natin 'yung relasyon natin sa Diyos, kasi hindi po lahat magkakaroon. Hindi po lahat makakakilala sa Diyos. Yung po 'yung totoo. Hindi po lahat mauunawaan 'yung katotohanan. Pwede pong marinig nila, pero pwede pong hindi nila maunawaan at hindi po nila maisa buhay. Unless, unless enabled po sila ni God. Kaya kung nandito po kayo na unawaan niyo po 'yung salita ng Diyos. Kung nandito po kayo na maintindihan niyo po 'yung kaligtasan na binigay ng Diyos, gusto ko lang pong sabihin sa inyo, magpasalamat po kayo sa Diyos. Because before you were born, before you were born, God already foreknew. A useless man like us, chosen by God. What a grace, di ba po? Kaya po siguro si Paul, lagi lang sinasabi, a rich man like me, what a grace that comes from God, that I am chosen to serve him, that we have this. Kaya nga po, the more na naiintindihan po natin 'yung katotohanan sa salita ng Diyos, dapat po, mas nagiging seryoso po tayo sa pagdaling po sa Diyos, amen po ba? Di ba po, dapat the more na naiintindihan natin 'yung mga katotohanan na to, hindi po tayo mapunta dun sa, mapasama tayo. But the more na naiintindihan po natin to, hindi po tayo magyayabang. Hindi po tayo magyayabang na pinili po tayo ng Diyos. Dapat po, the more na naiintindihan po natin to, mas naiintindihan po natin na dapat tayo magpaumbaba. Kasi dapat hindi ako pinili ng Diyos, pero ba't ako napili? Get's niyo po ba? Dapat po hindi po tayo magkaroon ng sense of pride that we are chosen by God, by his foreknowledge, but we should be humble that we are chosen by God, by his grace. Dito po 'yung emphasis, that we are chosen by God, by his grace, by his love, by his mercy. And let's jump to Romans chapter 9, verse 14 to 16. Sabi ni Paul, because of this certain argument, na ano yun, injustice pa si God, na binahi na si Jacob, ayaw niya kay Esau, what shall we say then? There is no injustice with God, is there? Sabi ni Paul, far from it. There is no injustice in God. For he says, for he says to Moses, "I will have mercy on whom I have mercy." The same thing that I'm telling you, God is being so merciful to us. And I will show compassion whom ever I show compassion. And in verse 16, so then, it does not depend on the person who wants it, nor the one who runs, but on God, who has mercy. Hindi po namili si God ng person because of ancestors. Hindi po namili si God ng person because of deed. Ang sinasabi po dito ni Paul, inemphasize ni Paul, that God is not unfair. Alam niyo po ba't hindi unfair si God? Because when God made a choice, it is both righteous and perfect. 'Yung God po na pinaglilingkuran natin, when he make a choice, it is both righteous and perfect, and God chooses. And God chooses to be kind to the people. He acts with mercy and love when he deals with people. And he does not, eto po, gusto ko lang pong sabihin, he does not deal with them as they deserve. Si God po, doesn't deal with us as we deserve. He show us his love as he chooses. So primarily po, 'yung karakter po ni God, he is righteous and perfect. He is righteous and perfect. What I mean is, si God po hindi nagkakamaliin the things that he wants to do. Totoo lang po, as creations of God, we don't have really right to question the creator, "Why do you make us like this?" Or "Why do you make a better pattern than me?" Why? Because he is God, he doesn't make mistake. Kaya nga po, sabi ko, dapat po mas nakikita natin 'yung biyaya ni God sa atin, the more naiintindihan natin 'yung karakter ni God eh. And in Romans chapter 9, verse 17 to 18, "For the scripture says to Pedro, "For this very reason I raised you up, in order to demonstrate my power in you, and that my name might be proclaimed throughout the earth. So then he has mercy on whom he desires, and he hardens whom he desires." Like the heart of the Pedro, sabi dun, pinatigas ni God eh, 'yung heart ni Pedro eh, para makita 'yung glory niya eh. But on the majority, pinatigas ni God 'yung heart ni Pedro. Para san? Para mapakita niya sa mga Israelites kung gaano sila kamahal. Idig sabihan, 'yung choice ni God into certain choices that he need, it's for the better of most. And ito po 'yung gusto ko kanina na i-highlighted, kasi medyo theological eh, very deep 'yung mga pinag-uusapan po natin. Nasaya, sabi ko po kanina, hindi naman po talaga kailangan ni God na, ano eh, patigasin 'yung puso natin para lumayo tayo sa kanya. Alam niyo po ba bakit? Natural na po sa tao na starborn. Get's niyo po ba, we are born sinners. Idig sabihin ko, wala na pong kailangan gawin si God para maging masama tayo. Para mapalayo tayo sa kanya. Kasi at the beginning pa lang, nung kasala si Adam and Eve, Kasi at the beginning pa lang, nung kasala sa idam itin, dahil po tayo, we are all meant to go to hell. God doesn't need to do anything for us to go to eternal destruction at the first place. God is always true to His word in Romans chapter 3 verse 23, "For the wages of sin is death and the gift of God is eternal life." There is already a sinful nature to everyone, that God doesn't need to do anything for us to go into destruction. Na get it po ba yon? Na parang sinasabi nila, 'yung choice ni God sa mga tao, we don't need to question God because at the beginning, we are all sinners. Ibig sabihin, ayaw po yon, yon po 'yung fact, ayaw po 'yung truth about this. That at the beginning, we are sinners, that God doesn't make to do anything for you to turn away from Him. Honestly, God doesn't need to do anything for us to turn away from Him, but God needs to enable us so that we believe in Him. So kaya po, sinasabi ko dito, even this, na parang then 'yung verse 18, that God will show His mercy to whom He desires and we cannot question that. Kasi tayo po 'yung lumayo, tayo po 'yung nagkasala. Alam niyo po, we deserve punishment. We deserve punishment. That's reality. And people don't wanna accept that, that we are meant to destruction. Pero salamat po sa biyaya ni God, na He shows mercy to those who He wants to show mercy. And that's the good thing. Kung nandito po kayo ng isa sa buko Romans, sana isa po kayo sa pinakitaan ng mercy ni God. Kaya po, pinakitaan ng mercy ni God, kaya po tayo nandito today. So God is not being unfair when He makes a person's heart grow increasingly hard because it is the result of their own sinfulness. We are already sinful at the beginning. God doesn't need to do anything, but He still chose to show mercy and love for the people who we choose. At tayo po yon na mga anak ng Diyos. At marami pa po na gustong maabutan Diyos. Kaya po, tuloy-tuloy lang po tayo sa pag-share ng Gospel, sa pag-abot sa mga tao. Bakit po? Hindi naman po nating alam kung sino po 'yung i-open ni God 'yung heart eh. We don't know. That's why we need to keep sharing the Gospel. That's why we need to keep preaching out. That's why we need to keep growing with our relationship with God. And in verse 19, malapit-lapit na po ito, like few verses more, overtime po yata tayo. Ahm, okay pa po ba kayo? Asama ka pa po ba kayo o nakakatulog na po kayo sa mga pinagsasabi ko po dito? Are you still okay? Thumbs up po kayo diyan kung are you still okay? Last 10 verses na po tayo, last 10 to 12 verses. In Romans chapter 9 verse 19 to 21, "You will say to Me then, 'Why does He still find fault? Or who has resisted His will? On the contrary, who are you, you foolish person?' Who answers back to God?" Sabi nga, sino tayo para questionin si God? Paul was talking to the Romans. Who we are to question God? "The thing molded will not say to the molder, 'Why did you make me like this?' Will it? Or does the pattern not have a right over the plate to make from the same lamp one object for honorable use and another for common use?" Sinasabi ko dito, God's decisions are always right and His judgments are always perfect. The amazing thing is that we stubbornly argue to the contrary in our minds because of our fallen, diabolic natures. Ibig sabihin po, we always try to question God's decision. Alam niyo po ba't? We always wanna challenge God. We always wanna challenge Him because of our fallen nature. Because of our sinful nature, we are stubborn. Remember, God is not arbitrarily dooming anyone to hell. Hindi niya po talaga pinadala sa hell na mapahama. They are doomed by their own willfulness and unbelief. Pagpinalalim niyo po ito logically, internalize niyo po ito. Kaya po napupunta 'yung mga tao sa hell because of unbelief and sinfulness. Because they don't choose that. Kaya nga po sinasabi ko sa inyo, 'yung sovereignty ni God tsaka privilege ni God pinagsama niya yon, that He is sovereign, He knows all things, but He let men choose their path. He let men choose God, He let men choose sin, He let men choose other things. But under the umbrella of His sovereignty, inallow po tayo ni God to make choices. Naiintindihan po mo yon, under the sovereignty of God, the umbrella of the sovereignty of God, He let man choose. Hindi niya po tayo ginawang role. He still allow us to choose Him, He still allow us to love Him, He still allow us to make decisions in life. And that's who God is. And verse 22 and 24, "What if God, although willing to demonstrate His strength and to make His power known, endured with great patience objects of wrath prepared for destruction?" Gusto ko lang po sabihin dun sa verse 22, papano nga po if because of sin? Gusto lang pong magalit ni God. May karapatan po si God magalit because He hates sin. May karapatan po si God magalit because He created us for a reason and we are not living according to the purpose and reason for God. And God has that responsibility and also, alam mo yon, meron siyang karapatan na magalit, magalit. Pero ang sinasabi po ng Romans, pero hindi pinili ng Diyos na magalit lang siya. Basta alam niyo po, pinili ng Diyos, pinadala niya po si Cristo. Honestly, pwedeng at the beginning, lahat po ng tao is doomed to hell. Mapahama na lang kayo agad, magalit si God sa inyo, pero alam niyo po, eto po 'yung pinan niyo, pinadala pa rin ni God, si Jesus Christ, to make His power known. Sabi nga po dito, "with great patience objects of wrath prepared for destruction." "And He did so to make known the riches of His glory upon objects of mercy which He prepared beforehand for glory." Namely, as tayo po yon, pinakwita po ni God 'yung glory niya, whom He also called, not only from the Jews, but also from the Gentiles. Minsan po, pagtinanong tayo, pagnakita po natin 'yung cross, ang nakikita po natin love ni God, hindi po natin nakikita 'yung wrath ni God. Alam niyo po ba, two things po 'yung pinakita sa cross, it is the grace and the love of God and it is the wrath of God. Kaya po, kaya po nakarusahan si Cristo, it is the wrath of God. Na dapat tayo 'yung tumanggap ng wrath of God, but in our replacement, Jesus Christ came over that represents grace, mercy, love, that we don't deserve. Now, and we question God. Simple man questioning God. Do we really have the right to question God's choices? That we don't deserve, but that we deserve wrath at the beginning, but He doesn't give that immediately. But He offered His Son, Jesus Christ, to show His glory, that I am all-powerful, that I love you this much. Not just for the chosen nation, for the Jew, but also for us Gentiles. Grabe po 'yung love ni Lord, grabe po 'yung grace ni God. And verse 25 and 26, as He also says to Hosea, "I will call those who were not My people, like the Gentiles, My people and her who was not beloved, beloved, and it shall be that in the place where it was said to them, 'You are not My people.' There they shall be called sons of the living God." Grabe po, sabi pa lang sa Hosea na, "I will call those who are not My people and that's us Gentiles, and My people and her who was not beloved, beloved." God is good to us. Paul also says word as a prophecy. It is a prophecy that the Gentiles would also be people whom God called. Also that this was already happening by means of His own work among the Gentiles. Yon po 'yung sinasabi in that verses. And in Romans chapter 9 verse 27 to 29, "Isaiah cries out concerning Israel, 'Through the number of the sons of Israel may be like the sound of the sea; only the remnant will be saved; for the Lord will execute His word on the earth totally and quickly, and just as Isaiah foretold.'" If the Lord of armies had not left us descendants, we would have become like Sodom and would have been like Gomorrah. Ibig sabihin po, alam naman po natin 'yung nangyari sa Sodom and Gomorrah. Binisak po yun ni God. And if God doesn't save us and God doesn't offer Jesus, we are all meant to doom. Ibig sabihin po, into destruction. That's why the apostle also saw Isaiah's word as well as prophecy, that many Jews would not trust God. It's also a prophecy that many Jews will not trust God. Only a few would accept His Son and avoid judgment, yet by then, God would ultimately carry out His promise to save the Jews. Siempre nato patay po 'yung promise ni God to save the Jews. It is a wonder of divine power and mercy that there are any saved, for even those who left to be a sinner. If God has dealt with them according to their sin, they would perish with the rest. Kaya po, eto po 'yung highlight natin eh. It is only by God's grace whereby any of us are saved. Whether you are Jew, whether you are Gentile, you are only saved by grace, you are only chosen by God by grace. Yon po 'yung highlight natin dito sa chapter 9. And verse 13 to 11, what shall we say then? "The Gentiles who did not pursue righteousness attained righteousness, but the righteousness that is..." Ano po yon? "Righteousness that is by faith." Kaya po tayo, made righteous, it is by faith. Ulit-ulitin po ko po, kasi yon po 'yung emphasis ni Paul, and yon po 'yung emphasis ng buko Romans, that we are made righteous by faith. However, Israel pursuing a law of righteousness did not arrive at the law. Ginagawa po ni Paul 'yung comparison, that the Gentiles are saved because of righteousness by faith. And these Jews, this countrymen that I have, they wanna pursue the law of righteousness through the law. And hindi po yon 'yung main thing, sabi ni Paul, the main thing is we should all believe in Christ and Messiah, so that we can be made righteous. And in the last verses of Romans chapter 9, why? Sabi nga, bakit hindi nakuha ng mga, pagtinignan po natin to, bakit hindi nakuha ng mga Israelite 'yung righteousness by the law? Sinabi ni Paul sa verse 32 and 33, why? Because they did not pursue it by faith. Kaya po, sobrang importante po ng faith niyo when it comes to your relationship with God, because everything is by faith. We should all pursue by faith. We should always do things by faith. Kaya nga po, when you look at Hebrew, it's impossible to know that without faith. When you look at Hebrews chapter 11, it talks about how important faith is. Yun eh po 'yung sinasabi dito, that we should pursue by faith, but as though they could by works. "They stumbled over the stumbling stone, just as it is written, 'Behold, I am laying in Zion a stone of stumbling and the rock of offense, and the one who believes in him will not be put to shame.'" And ito pong sinasabi ng verse 33, it talks about Jesus, our rock, the rock of our salvation. It talks about Jesus, that, "Behold, I am laying in Zion a stone of stumbling and the rock of offense, and the one who believes in Him will not be put to shame." It talks about Jesus. We should anchor our faith in Jesus, we should put our faith in Jesus. Kasi 'yung mga Diyos po, they don't put their faith in Jesus, kasi ayaw nga nila maniwala. They grow up to believe in the law and they just need to follow the law. But Paul was transitioning them, transitioning them, that you need to believe on the rock of our salvation, who is Jesus Christ. And as I end po dito para po, because overtime na po yata ako, as I end this, the Gospel is for everyone, both Jews and Gentiles. And let's wanna highlight, no one can earn salvation by means of their own effort. No one can get their salvation because you are raised on a certain boundary. You are saved by grace, you are chosen by God by grace. You are a follower of Christ, not because of your merits or of your accomplishment, but it's only by grace. So I just wanna end po Romans chapter 9. Hopefully po, you've learned something tonight. And next week po, we're gonna talk about Romans chapter, we're gonna talk about Romans chapter 10 and Romans chapter 11 after that week po. Isang buong ano po ito, taught me Paul about the Israelites and his sword for his nation, na nando po 'yung heart niya for his nation, but he was saying that we can be saved by faith, we can be made righteous by faith. And as Gentiles, hindi po original na Jew as Israelite, dapat po mas maging humble tayo, rather than proud, that we are also chosen by God, by His foreknowledge. So may God bless us all po.